Okay, we're left.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Education, Tuesday the 28th of July, 2020. Councilmember Bowman.
President.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Formas.
All right, thank you all for joining us today from the top, Sean.
Okay, item number one.
Item number one, DMV report on auto tech program.
This item is open.
This item is actually going to be tabled, we're waiting on the discussion from New York State, DMV Commissioner Mark Schroeder's office, Pat Curry is going to come and tell us a little bit about this program. He was not able to make this meeting, so we will table this.
Motion to table.
I can have it. Noakowski.
Item number two, Jay Pollat, Buffalo Academy of Science Charter School Renewal Denial.
This item is open?
This item has already passed the charter school, this was sent to the Education Department, the charter school was renewed, Buff State, they received their renewal, so the motion at this time is to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number three, Bowman reopening schools amid COVID-19.
This item is open?
Thank you, Councilmember. This item was submitted to cultivate a conversation on the reopening of schools in September. Do we have Dr. Krestes on, Malcolm?
Yes, we do, he's just joined us.
I don't see you there, doctor, but Dr. Krestes, could you just provide an update regarding the reopening of schools and what the superintendent's office, some of the challenges we're facing, and just an update on that item, please?
Mr. Chair, he was on, it looks like he's now connecting his video.
Yeah, hold on while he's connecting, thank you. Dr. Krestes, can you hear us?
Well, you should be good to go, you're just on mute, you want to hit spacebar on your computer there? How's that?
Perfect, much better. I don't know if you heard that intro, doctor, but we were just looking for an update regarding this item. I filed this item just to cultivate a conversation regarding reopening in September, and you know, some of the challenges you're facing, and just to cultivate that conversation of what's, if you have an update for us on reopening of schools in September.
Sure, be happy to give you a general update. The first thing is, the superintendent directed that the central office begin its transitional opening this coming Monday, August 3rd. So we have 12 so-called central office sites around the district. The biggest are City Hall with about, just a little over 200 employees. The next largest are places like Central Registration on Ash Street, and also our Food Commissary. And then the rest of them are smaller sites, our Service Center in South Buffalo is a fairly large site. And we created a plan that was sent out in consultation with Erie County and with Mike Finn and Public Works. So we're in the home stretch of making sure that all of the protocols are ready to be followed and that the buildings are prepared for that. So that's coming up on August 3rd. You can look for central office staff to be transitioning back at a 50% occupancy rate of their offices, rotating in no more than two days per week on-site, continuing to work from home three days per week. And then the superintendent will use his discretion to incrementally increase that as we get closer to September. With regard to the school opening, we have had a planning team led by Dr. Darren Brown Hall and also some key cabinet members, Chief Academic Officer Anne Botticelli, working with the superintendent to follow the scripted guidelines for planning set forth by the State Education Department. The first step is to respond by this Friday with general assurances. It's not so much a detailed plan yet, but general assurances that the district is in a position to be able to consider multiple options for return, and that they have prepared for all of the different categories in the upcoming planning that needs to take place. The turning point for not just Buffalo, but for all districts will be when the governor establishes what the parameters for reopening are, and that'll be probably within that first week of August. So we hope that next week, we're going to be getting some specifics from the governor. Here's how school districts can open. At that point, the district will engage in a much more detailed planning process, which the superintendent will direct. And essentially, we'll be completing a template that is established by the State Education Department that says, these are all the things you need to stipulate in your opening. So beyond that, I can only tell you that the planning process has gone forward with multiple stakeholders at different levels. The team includes teachers, parents, administrators, and civic leadership. One last point I'll make is that the superintendent has implemented what we think is really a distinctive approach to how all of this planning takes place. And he established a health advisory council with some of the leading physicians in Buffalo on infectious diseases. And particularly when the detailed plan that must be submitted to State Ed after the governor's announcement, at that point, you know, they will have a heightened level of engagement just to kind of be another set of eyes on how the district is planning. So we feel really fortunate in Buffalo to have doctors influencing all of the considerations that a superintendent and a board will need to have in order to open safely in September.
Thank you, doctor. Councilmembers, do we have any questions?
I do.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Krestes, are you working with the parent-teacher group, or do you have other parents from the community?
I can get back to you on who specifically are the parents, but it is likely a representation of all of our parent groups, and that is done through what we call our parent congress. So there are multiple groups, by the way, that are in that. It's more than just the two or three that we used to have. And it's a really diverse group, it's a cross-section of the district. We're very happy that our parents, you know, they themselves enjoy a diversity of opinion and perspectives on things. So they're not, they're not like a, just a homogeneous group thinking one way. They really think out of the box, they think creatively, and that's been really helpful to us.
Are there any surveys or anything? I mean, you're getting feedback, and how are you getting this feedback with COVID and not being able to assemble together?
Well, they do, yeah, they do assemble virtually, and they do conduct their meetings. There will be, once the detailed plan gets developed, there will be some public hearings that are done virtually on that, just to get community input. We are definitely going to want to hear from the broader parent community, who, you know, may not necessarily be engaged in official organizations at the district level. So we definitely want to hear from them. So there'll be that type of opportunity as well. And then, of course, the board, through any of their work sessions or meetings, will be engaging the public on reopening plans.
So last question, do you think that, well, we don't know what the governor is thinking, but if he were to reopen schools, would that be typically on our regular school schedule in September? Or do you think it may be October or later?
Wouldn't be able to speculate on the timeline. I can only tell you that with the expertise of the individuals that are leading this work, and with Dr. Cash's direction, which is, it's constant, it's every day, that, you know, I have absolutely no doubt that the district will have a successful reopening plan based on the rubrics established by the governor and the State Education Department, and we will proceed. So the details on the timeline and what exactly opening will look like, that's yet to be determined, just like in every school district right now. But I can assure you that once, once that determination is made, the district will spare no expense and no set of resources to have the opening that our families and students deserve.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Krestes.
Any other councilmembers?
Mr. Chair, additionally, you've been joined by Council President Pridgen and Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Thank you. Yeah, if there's no other councilmembers that want to speak on this item, are there any members? I think most people are here for the, most of our guests are here for the next item, but did anyone else have a question on this one? Okay, motion to table.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Item number four, S. Redford, request to speak, Education Committee.
This item is open?
Thank you, this item was filed by Mr. Redford, and we will give him the floor at this time to make his presentation.
Thank you, Chairperson Bowman, appreciate you giving us an opportunity to present to you today. I'm coming today on behalf of the Learn for Life Charter School, and we have a simple request of the common council. We asked the Education Subcommittee to consider a resolution to, a resolution to support for the Learn for Life Charter School, to make a recommendation to the full council, the full council support the Learn for Life Charter School. The Learn for Life Charter School currently has an application before the Board of Regents, and that will come up for a vote in September. And we would like to get as much support locally for that application as possible. The, we have also joining with us, Learn for Life Board Member, Board President Phil Dabney. We also have Board Member Bishop Michael Badger online with us, and another one of our consultants, Duncan Kirkwood. What we wanted to do today was share with you why we believe that this should be supported, and be able to answer any questions you may have, you know, regarding, you know, the Learn for Life Charter School. In particular, we wanted to get council support because we know that based on what's going on with COVID-19, and based on what's going on with the current budget, that this is a year, a tough year to do anything budget-wise, right? So what we wanted to do is make sure that we gave the specific information about Learn for Life that made it different from a typical charter school. Learn for Life is a charter school that focuses on schools, what students who are dropped out of school. So it's not, it's not, we will not be in competition for Buffalo Public Schools students. As a matter of fact, as it relates to the budget, Learn for Life should be a net gain in terms of the budget for Buffalo Public Schools, which came up in a meeting that we had with the superintendent and the Learn for Life Executive Staff when they came to Buffalo. It should be a net gain for the Buffalo Public Schools in terms of the budget, because Learn for Life students are students who are dropped out of school. And so when they come, so that means there are no resources coming to the district for that student at all. So when that student comes back into, comes back into the school system, they come in, and two-thirds of that money goes to the charter school, but a third of that money stays with the district. So they all actually get a net gain for all the students that come back into the school district. As a matter of fact, when we met with the superintendent, what we also discussed is the fact that this is a benefit to Buffalo Public Schools in other ways. Because that child, that's a Learn for Life student, also the student who is currently on their roles as a dropout, somebody who has dropped out of school. And when they come back and they register with Learn for Life, they will now come off of Buffalo's Public Schools as a dropout. And, you know, they will also come out of Buffalo's, Buffalo Public Schools as a student who, their graduation rate, it should help their graduation rate in the sense that they won't be a Buffalo Public School student anymore. So that won't, that would allow Buffalo Public Schools' graduation rate to increase. So all the way across the board, in terms of the benefit to Buffalo Public School, there's a benefit to the Buffalo Public School. So it's not the typical taking students away or taking funds away that you would normally see with other charter schools. But most importantly, it's a needed service that we have here in Buffalo. You understand, I'll let our board, other board members talk to why it's such an important service that we have here. And we also went there, and we went and visited their other sites. Duncan Kirkwood was with us when we went to visit other sites, so with to make sure this is something that will work for Buffalo. So we prepared to answer those questions, if you have those questions. And I'll let Bishop Badger or Phil Dabney share anything they want to share at this particular point.
Well, Sam, this Bishop Badger, I just want to say that, you know, in support of, I think, this needed program, educational program for those that kind of dropped out of this educational system, to give them that one-on-one type of learning experience, and to help them not only to get back in school, but to actually get a diploma and not just a GED, and also to be able to direct them to a particular vocation or onto college, I think is something that will be very beneficial for our community and for those that have kind of lost hope, maybe because of difficulty in being in a traditional learning setting. So I definitely would like to see the support of the council pertaining this unique school system, our school that, charter school, that I think will be very beneficial for our community.
Thank you, Bishop. Anything you want to add, Chairperson?
I just wanted to add that I think what is, what was already articulated by Brother Redford is that this is not an opportunity that puts us in such a position that we're competing with the wanted success of, say, the Buffalo Public School or the current issues that it's facing. We are actually, as I believe it, and I bought into, an opportunity to recapture those that, quite frankly, have been lost in terms of the type of students who learns differently, who has been more or less discarded based upon a number of, or variety of this, different circumstances. This structure and type of opportunity, educational opportunity, provides yet another chance for a young man or a young lady to, in fact, be reintroduced and reintroduced in such a way that is more tailored to the way that they can, in fact, learn. And when this was brought to me, and I had the opportunity to look at not only the application that's before the New York State Education Department, but also at large, Learn for Life and its success rate, and what it provides for not just simply the community, the educational community, but also the social community. I think it's a win-win for everyone. I think that Brother Redford articulated that very well. So I would just want to harp on what he's already a puppy for the board.
And finally, Duncan Kirkwood was with us when we visited the sites.
Good afternoon, still morning, I guess. Good morning, councilmembers, and everyone on the call, we appreciate the opportunity. Once again, a couple councilmembers have given letters of support to support, you know, Learn for Life and the mission coming to Buffalo. So again, I want to say thank you all for that. When we, you know, when they first came to us, you know, we were very skeptical, right? Because what they were saying, it almost didn't sound like it was possible, you know, if I'm being honest, right? They said, "We educate students who have dropped out of high school. We've got an independent learning model, which is kind of like college, where students pick their courses, and they go at their own pace, and, you know, they take students up to 21 years old, and they end up with a high school diploma." And it would just, you know, that sounds good, you know what I mean? But sometimes people talk that talk, but in reality, they're not delivering those type of results. So we actually told them, before we can be any type of way affiliated with this, we got to go see it for ourselves. So we went to California, we went through Lancaster, LA, Inglewood, and we went to go see it for ourselves. And in the first school we went to in Inglewood, there was a Latina woman who was the school leader. So boom, right out the gate, I'm like, oh, wait, a diverse student leaders, diverse school leadership, right? And this school in the middle of like the gang-affiliated areas in Inglewood, they have created a safe space where students are really learning. Now, again, I just was like, well, let's see what it's really about. And they're really, they have small group instruction, because this school is all year round, and the school is like seven in the morning until about seven at night open. They're able to have small groups. So there's one teacher and a table with about eight students. And so they get a little small group instruction, and then they go independent learning. Like, they all have a tablet that they're learning on, and they're able to go at their own pace. So like, if some students have more needs, they get more teaching, they're more coaching. But if other students got the lesson, they could just continue and move forward. Right at that school, we also saw, and at the next location, that they had a lot of single moms, right? You know, unfortunately, sometimes teenagers, they'll get pregnant, and then they drop out of school. Well, they were seeing, and this was a trend, so they started what they called as a HOPE program. So basically, inside the school, there's like a daycare. So mothers can actually bring their child with them, and fathers can bring their child with them to the school and actually do their work while their kid is playing on the, you know, the blocks and the kids' learning area and everything like that. So that's not a barrier anymore. And with the HOPE program, they actually give the mothers and the fathers everything they need, as many diapers as they need, as much baby food as they need, wipes, everything. They're able to meet the needs. And looking at that here, one of the needs is going to get students ready for Northland, right? So one of the needs is going to be to get more of our students prepared to take advantage of opportunities at Northland. And so they said, "We're going to build a curriculum specifically for students that are interested in that industry, so that they can be prepared to take the TAFE test and everything." And again, remember, these are students who have dropped out of school. So we're going to be able to get them back in, and they'll actually be able to take advantage of the Say Yes Scholarship Program and go and matriculate. So they went from being a high school dropout on the street to back-enroll their school and on their path to going to college. So it's a really powerful situation. And again, you know, I would think it'd be like violence, right? You know, you got all of these high school dropouts, different areas, gang violence. I'm like, is there really a 19 or 20-year-old sitting there learning geometry on a tablet, self-paced? Yes, we actually saw rooms and rooms full of these young people that are learning and growing. And not like some staged, you know, one or two young people that are the best and the brightest, but like, we're actually walking through each site, talking to the young people, seeing them do their work. One guy got a baby on one arm, his tablet in his other arm, reading his lesson. And we really just got to see that this is something that's powerful. So bringing that to Buffalo, because we know we have so many students that are dropping out, that are not graduating. You know, our graduation rate is continuing to rise, right? But even though it's continuing to rise at 65, 67%, that means it's still almost a third of our students aren't graduating. And we do, I know there are already programs for some of these individuals, but this will be a targeted program to help those students who have dropped out of high school, get back in, get the support, get the learning, get the training, so that they can actually graduate. And again, it's not something that's hypothetical, they're actually doing it. They have, they serve between California, Flint, Michigan, and Columbus, South Carolina. They serve 40,000 students that are high school dropouts. So they serve more high school dropouts than there are students in Buffalo Public Schools. And so that is what the energy we want to bring, where students get to change their story. That's like the message of the school, change your story. Where your story was one-way, you were on one track, we're going to change your story. And so with that, I would just, I'll stop there and thank you all for, again, this opportunity to present. We hope we can get your support, and I graciously yield my time back to the committee.
Thank you.
So that completes our presentation. We just asked for the common council support, support a resolution for the school. You know, at this point, we feel like it meets a need in Buffalo, and your support will make a difference for the Board of Regents, thank you.
Thank you, we have a few speakers here that wanted to make comment. One question I had, just that kind of sticks out to me, where in the process is this right now? Do you have a location picked out already, or where are we in the process with this?
No, we have an application that we have to get approved first before we do that. So we're waiting for an approval. In that process, we have some locations in mind, we have a board. Our other board members include Ivy Diggs, Washington, Kareem Amin, Crystal Rodriguez, Bishop Badger, Ron Brown, and Phil Dabney. We, obviously, this school has been around for over 20 years, have been existing since 1999 in California, and is a national organization. But, so we are, if we, if we are approved at the next Board of Regents meeting, whether it's September, October, we will open up in August of 2021.
And just, I just want to.
And it serves about 150 students.
Yeah, and I just want to answer your question as far as the location. The first location is going to be on the east side of Buffalo. So we are looking at all the locations that we're considering for the school to open will be on the east side of Buffalo.
Thank you. At this time, Council President.
I have to jump off on another call in a little while, but I'll wait, I want to hear what the other speakers have to say.
All right, thank you. We have Larry Scott and, we'll start with Larry, or Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just had a couple of questions. Sam, what are, Mr. Redford, what are we looking at as far as the number of students that are possibly out there to a 10-year school right now? Do you have a number?
Yeah, I wouldn't have an exact number of the universal students, but we know, you know, on average, about, you know, 30 to 40% of Buffalo Public Schools students don't graduate every year. So it'll be that cohort of students up to 21 years old. So, you know, there, you know, I mean, I would venture to say, you know, at this point, that we're talking between seven and, you know, 9,000 students out there, maybe in that category.
And I like the idea that it's not going to draw anything from the public schools currently, because I know that that's constantly the problem, is that, you know, the charter schools draw money from the public schools. The other question would be, as far, you don't have any educators on your board? You have any educators?
Kareem Amin, Kareem Amin, obviously, used to work for Buffalo Public School, longtime teacher with the Board of, with Board, obviously, and Ron Brown is a professor at Buff State and so on. So, and obviously, we're going to hire a superintendent. So we got, we wanted a broad range of people, you know, from the education sector, from the business sector. Because what we really trying to do is target and getting these students who have dropped out into the pipeline. This is really about getting a safety net for those students. Again, being real clear, we're not trying to compete with Buffalo Public Schools. We're really trying to add value by getting a safety net to bring these students back in there. So we tried to work with people we thought would be able to be helpful in every area. You know, the education side of it, also the career track side, which is Ivy Diggs, Washington background, as well as, you know, getting people in off the street into the school.
So is there, is there not a process within the Buffalo Public Schools to actually recapture those students that have dropped out?
Um, you know, actually, I mean, Dr. Krestes here, he's probably the better person to answer that question. But what I would say at this point is, we're targeting the ones who have already dropped out, being saying. So, you know, there's obviously in other cities, I don't know if this was happening in Buffalo, but in other cities, what we have seen is that as opposed to letting the student drop out, some students, some schools actually refer them to the Learn for Life school, because what happens at Learn for Life is more of an independent studies model, is a more one-on-one model. And as opposed to having a student go through the process of dropping out, they can go to this Learn for Life school, and they still get a high school diploma. They don't get a TASC or a GED, they get a high school diploma. So whether the Buffalo, how the Buffalo Public School, you know, captures them, you know, maybe Dr. Krestes is better able to answer that.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm like with Duncan, it's like, in my mind, I'm like, this sounds too good to be true. But, you know, if it's something that, you know, can help our young people, especially those who feel like, you know, school is not for them. If there's another way of trying to capture them, you know, it sounds like it's a great opportunity.
And in California, that's exactly what we saw. We saw a lot of teenage parents who had dropped out of school, who now, because they can come to school, you know, you know, from seven in the morning, seven at night, you know, two or three days a week, based on their own schedule, bring their kids. It's really just, really tailor-made for students who are dropped out to try, you know, to, can't fit into the cookie cutter, you know, routine of what a typical high school is, the way it operates. And so hopefully, we will be able to provide that for the students here in Buffalo.
If I can just ask Dr. Krestes, Dr. Krestes, I know a couple of years when I was pushing for the, the daytime program with the city, there was a couple of students that said that they had dropped out, and they had not been reached out by the Buffalo Public Schools. And so that kind of reminds me, I guess the question is, what are we doing to try to recapture those students who drop out?
Yeah, the district has vastly improved its outreach.
Vastly improved its outreach and its program offerings to students who have dropped out. We have four virtual academies that are set up right now to accomplish this purpose. So they're really. Uh, and I'm, I'm going to have uh, some further comment. Uh, a little later on after your speakers have gone with, with regard to learn for life, but. As we speak right now, the district has strategically located virtual academies. That are set up for students who have withdrawn or are at risk of withdrawing. And uh, we also have, uh, although uh, it is a high school equivalency, remember, one of the most successful high school. Equivalency sites in the state of New York is right here in Buffalo. So we have both. We have. Uh, strategically located virtual academies for students who want to come back and graduate with a Regents diploma. And we also have high school equivalency, which is no longer just the G E D standard that used to exist. It's a much higher standard. It's a much more rigorous program and that is at uh, Saint Lawrence Academy. Uh, in North Buffalo, doing outstanding work with young people that have withdrawn. So there's a lot going on. In the school dis- district with regard to outreach. Uh, very successful staff members have this in their heart as their passion. Uh, to work with students who have withdrawn from formal education. Uh, so the district is, is quite engaged in this issue. Uh, and has a very successful uh, set of programs for, for students.
So, so what programs do you have in the inner city? You know, because I think they talked about the inner city, where, what programs are available to students in the inner city? Because Saint Lawrence is really out there.
Oh yeah, no, the, the virtual academies are set up in our high schools. Uh, so we have had them at South Park, at East and a few other locations. I can certainly get you the exact locations for that. They're embedded in our high schools and so students have FaceTime with qualified staff that are working to support them. They're also able to do a lot of the work independently as well, so that they can work at their own pace. Uh, and then just this, just this summer, we are now uh, launching a strong collaboration with Northland. To make sure that our students have a direct pipeline to the, to the uh, the career and vocational programs at Northland. We have eighty students there right now this summer. Uh, participating in an internship. So uh, the Northland pipeline is solid. Uh, in our district, but more importantly and more to the point, the uh, the, the, the credit recovery. And the academic credential recovery system that Buffalo has created under Dr. Cash is as strong as any around the state. Our virtual academies are working with hundreds of students. Who need an alternative option. They are not able to be as successful as everyone hoped in a traditional school setting. And the district was responsive in creating these options for them and, and has really done some outstanding work. I mentioned the um, high school equivalency program at Saint Lawrence. Because I don't want people to uh, underestimate the power of high school equivalency for some students. It is a much more robust program than it used to be and some students and parents of those students still want that. So a district has to be agile. You have to do two things at once. You have to create that alternative environment. Uh, as, as conveniently as possible for students who want a Regents diploma. And at the same time, you have to be realistic that for some students, they're not going to take that time to do that. And they do need a robust, uh, high quality high school equivalency as well.
I'll be, I would love to have some statistics on the number of students who drop out and how many you recapture. Um, to kind of look at that, because I, I don't know. I mean, I think that, you know, if our goal is educating every child. And meeting them at their needs, um, having opportunities such as this would just be just as good as anything else. Um, because not every, every student is going to attribute, um, go back to the program that you're talking about and maybe. Um, with this other group that they're bringing in for life, uh, maybe more attractive to them. Do you offer daycare and those type of things for? Students that come back?
We have, we have uh, support networks that work with us to make sure that childcare is available. So our. Primary partner for that is the Childcare Resource Network of Erie County. Um, really, uh, any, any organization is going to have to go through a licensed. Uh, organization that is able to supply childcare support. So we work, we work directly with the C C R N of Erie County.
Yeah, if you can give us some statistics on those things, I would love to see them and just be able to compare. Thank you.
Councilmember Wyatt, Councilmember Wyatt, if I could just say too, I, I just want to be real clear that. Um, you know, there are thousands of students out here that in this category. I mean, this, we're not competing against Buffalo Public Schools in any kind of way. We're staying. We're trying to, we, we all have the goal of one hundred percent of our students, you know, being able to get a high school diploma, a, a G D. And so there, there, there's not a shortage of the number of students that can be served. We only can serve a hundred and fifty students. Um, so obviously we want, we're trying to, you know, expand the fee of the safety net to include more students, not trying to take. Compete to get other people's students.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Rafford. At this time, I'd like to give our speakers an opportunity to have the floor, Mr. Larry Scott.
Uh, good morning, common council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today. Uh, Larry Scott's Buffalo Board of Education Member at Large and Chair of the Ad hoc Committee on District and Charter School Sustainability. Um, just some background information, in the year two thousand, Buffalo became the first city to offer one hundred percent open enrollment. And we opened the doors to charter schools, including two of our own authorized by the Board of Education Westminster and Enterprise. But we are now at a breaking point with the saturation of charters approaching twenty five percent enrollment in Buffalo. More than New York City at eleven percent where they have instituted a cap on new charters. And far more than the five percent maximum rate established by the state statute. This is not just a breaking point for our district schools, but existing and locally controlled charters. Our, our existing charters are struggling. With enrollment and also impacted by a harmful teacher shortage, reduction in essential services and supports. And unwarranted redundancy. An unchecked expansion of charters is a threat to the sustainability of existing charters as well as. Um, the district schools. Some have shared, some charter school leaders have shared this concern directly with me. Expenditures to charters will equal about a hundred fifty million in the Board of Education, Board of Education budget this coming school year. This is the largest growing expenditure in our budget after staffing. Learn for Life is a charter chain out of California with a notable history of deceptive practices yielding generous profits. They have been included in the Washington Post stories three times for their practices, the latest just yesterday. For maximizing on the federal paycheck protection program as part of the COVID nineteen economic stimulus. They accessed fifty one million in P P P loans and did so deceptively. This past January, Learn for Life was featured in the Washington Post story, story titled. The five most serious charter school scandals in twenty nineteen. Last year, a judge ordered the closing of two of its charters in June and three of its charters in August. Learn for Life is known for setting up space in storefronts, strip malls and former liquor stores. Where students meet with a teacher one to two days per week and complete a cycle of learning packets for the remainder. Their outcomes for students have been troubling. The Learn for Life Buffalo application has stated includes performance for twenty of their existing charter schools. In twenty nineteen, fifty percent of students met or exceeded state standards in these twenty schools. Fourteen percent of these students were African American, five point five percent were economically disadvantaged, point five. English language learners were proficient and two point six students with disabilities. Um, were proficient or met or exceeded state standards. Six of these schools did not have any English language learner students enrolled, while five did not have any with students with disabilities enrolled. Learn for Life is notorious for alternating officer positions and corporate and nonprofit company names to conceal their profit making schemes. With little overhead and minimal staff to manage the program and instruct students, it is ripe for abuse and turning steep profits. Lifelong Learning Administration Corporation, or L L A C, is identified as the proposed management company for Learn for Life Buffalo. L L A C boasts that it is the second largest education management organization in the nation. With a primary purpose to support personalized learning. It has a budget of three hundred million with a board that's predominantly white and male. The Learn for Life application indicates that over five years, three point two million in revenue from B P S tuition. Will leave Buffalo and go directly to L L A C as the C M O. That's three point two million that will not be invested in Buffalo and in particular to educate our students, district and charter. With the exception of one, existing Buffalo charters are locally run and controlled. And not operate, operated by an out of town charter management organization or charter chain. On the surface, Learn for Life has worthy ambitions, stating its letter of intent to serve students age fourteen to twenty one. However, the letter of intent and application makes clear that Learn for Life Buffalo will only replicate its personalized model. That is repeatedly demonstrated poor outcomes. Regular attendance in classroom with a teacher will be minimal with online courses for several courses. The minimal in-person support is further evident in the program's description for social emotional learning. They defer elsewhere for support. Quote, staff will refer students to the appropriate mental health services department for additional support services. Evidently implementing a whole child mo- model and investing in mental health professionals will cut into the bottom line. Furthermore, the discipline policy in their application is limited to just a few pages and only indicates the use of suspension to address behavior. Nothing on restorative practices or alternative approaches. Addressing disproportionality and the school to prison pipeline must also cut into the bottom line. Most would agree that graduation and dropout rates in Buffalo weren't in tension. As part of Buffalo Public Schools' education bargain since twenty fifteen, sixteen, ten new innovative high schools, including seven new C T E programs. Have been established. Several graduated their classes in June and unofficially. Data indicates that B P S will reach or exceed a graduation rate of seventy five percent. With more than half of our high schools reaching rates in the eighties and nineties. This is groundbreaking, groundbreaking for education in the city of Buffalo. Furthermore, enrollment in advanced placement courses has notably climbed to sixty one percent. With greatest gains for African American and Hispanic and Latino students. The B P S Alternative Education Program has been redesigned to include quality curriculum. And teaching with expanded C T E options for historically marginalized students. I visited that program. Pre-COVID and it's witnessed firsthand its improvement. Um, Dr. Cressis mentioned the four web-based credit recovery programs that we have, virtual based programs. So I will skip over that portion. Um, but also the education, adult education division. Educates annually six thousand and five hundred students aged seventeen or older, and this, these are students citywide. The location may be at Saint Lawrence in North Buffalo, but it is open to all students throughout our city. And this program has been recognized by New York State. Many of our Buffalo students exhibit extraordinary needs and this has been amplified during this COVID nineteen pandemic and school closure. The concept of implementing a program that will provide less for our students who require more. While bleeding more expenditures from Buffalo Public Schools and students to feed a bottom line is unconscionable. I respectfully request sincere collaboration with the Board of Education and Buffalo Public Schools. Before pursuing any action that would be at odds with the board's mission, goals and fiduciary's responsibility for the district. And the education of our Buffalo students. I welcome an opportunity to discuss further how the unchecked growth of charter schools in Buffalo. Impacts the financial and educational viability of district and our current charter schools here in Buffalo. Thank you, Chairman Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. At this time, we'll go to our next speaker, Mr. Petrucci.
Yeah, thank you. I, I mean, Larry summed up, uh, you know, again, I. Larry summed up many of the concerns of the board members that I've heard over the last few months. Uh, my main concern is that the, while we share the same, uh. The same goals of, of our respected speakers that are asking the common council to do a letter of support. Uh, we differ in how we're going to get to the top of the mountain. Uh, we're trying to implement on the Buffalo Public Schools, all these different policies and programs to address mainly the same things that they are. We just see it as being the Buffalo Public Schools as the best vehicle. Uh, to achieve those goals going forward. I, I guess my main concern, and I, I won't be long, I'll work in brevity today. Is that, uh, that these gentlemen, uh, this organization that wants a letter of support. Went to the common council as opposed to the Buffalo Board of Education. And while we do like working with the Board of Education, we are partners on so many different things between the city of Buffalo and the Board of Education. I really believe that the place for this letter of recommendation or a letter of support firmly rests in the Board of Education as opposed to Buffalo Common Council. So with all respect, I'll conclude my remarks and turn on to the next speaker, uh, Chairman Bowman.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Petrucci. Mr. Harris, are you here to speak on this segment as well?
You got it. I was, um, I'm sorry, uh, the item that you were working on with me was tabled. Uh, concerning the Bergard Automotive Program. Uh, I was just here to give information for that, but decided to stay on until. Uh, Dr. Karestis didn't need me anymore.
Okay, thank you very much. We also have on the line, um, Paulette Woods, who has called on, and she has the floor.
To my esteemed colleagues on the common council, Council President Priggin. Chairman, Education Chairman Bowman, and the other esteemed councilmen. Um, I asked you to let us reason together. In this year, in the Buffalo Public Schools budget, we are scheduled to pay a hundred and thirty eight million dollars. In charter tuition payments. It's projected, as Larry mentioned, to grow to a hundred and fifty million dollars. Let's put that in perspective. Buffalo City of Buffalo gives us only seventy point eight million, less than half of that. Every dollar, every dollar that the citizens of Buffalo is paying to educate their children. Is going out the door to charter schools. And double that amount is going to charter schools. Our legislators, honorable crystal peoples, fights every year for the state to give us an increase in aid. To help our Buffalo school district. We receive fourteen million dollars increase in state aid. Every dollar, fourteen point five million had to go to the nine thousand children in charter schools. It left nothing for the thirty six, the thirty six thousand children in the Buffalo schools. The impact of a charter school tuition. And its increased cost is unsustainable for Buffalo Public Schools. It threatens our stability. While the city of Buffalo and Buffalo Public Schools are facing state aid budget cuts. We are facing the increased cost to the schools to try to protect our children from COVID nineteen. As we fight for survival in these crucial times. We have asked for, and we respectfully, we cannot afford any more charter schools. We have sent letters for the last two years asking for a moratorium. My plea to you, my colleagues. Is as we have a mutually beneficial cooperative relationship, we work together with the city of Buffalo. We have joint funds that we support the Buff City of Buffalo's viability. Please stand with us and support our viability. We cannot afford, we ask you not to recommend or support. Any increase in charter schools, fight with us for survival for all of our children. Sustain and support the moratorium. You've heard already all of the good things we're doing, the differences we're making, the significant increases in the programs. The high schools. I asked you, my colleagues, stand with us. We vote down this, do not support this resolution. I thank you.
Thank you, Member Woods. Are there any other speakers on this line? I will give Mr. Rafford an opportunity to rebut and then um, we'll ask council members, but Mr. Cressy says his hand raised as well. Give you an opportunity for the floor, then council members.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I won't cover uh, any of the ground that our distinguished Board of Education members covered. I. I guess I just want to summarize this way by letting you know that the district has some very serious concerns. About Learn for Life as a company, uh, as a charter school chain. Um, it is, it is no secret, you just have to do a Google search. That they are at the center of some of the most corrupt scandals. Uh, in the charter school industry and also among some of the most dismal results. Uh, for students of any charter school chain, and I want to be very clear, this is not about. Supporting charters or being against charters. I I want you to be keenly aware of what you're being asked to do. You, you are being asked to attach the name of the Buffalo Common Council. To a company that is rife with financial scandal. Dismal academic results. And, uh, I can assure you that the district will be engaging with every level of government. Every level of civic leadership to oppose this application. And yeah, there, it's certainly the financial considerations because of the breaking point. Uh, that that this district and many other districts around New York State are under simply because of the numbers. That's not the focus of my comments though, right now. My, the focus is on, you need to think long and hard about. Uh, what you're being asked to do and the type of company that you're being asked to attach the good name of the common council to. So, uh, as I said, we will, we will be engaging every level of government, every level of civic leadership in Buffalo. To oppose this application because this is a company that is riddled with financial scandal and poor academic results.
Thank you, Doctor, and, uh, we definitely will be deliberating and asking for, um, any information to be sent to the Chief of Staff with regards to. Um, you know, the articles and the things you're seeing. Council members, do you have, uh, questions? Council President, President?
Thank you. Um, and when I jump off in a minute, it's only because I have to go to another meeting. So first of all, thank you to everybody who is on, um, just a couple of questions. I heard the word moratorium from one of the speakers. Is there presently a moratorium on charter schools? I'm not sure who said that.
Anybody? No, it's Mrs. Woods' comment. I'm not sure that she's on anymore. Dr. Kressi's may be able to answer.
Uh, no, there, there is not an official moratorium established by the state legislature or by the state education department. The Board of Education in the past has requested, uh, such a moratorium and the district has had ongoing discussion again with. You know, various levels of government about the processes in which, uh, that allow charter schools to be approved in New York State. But, uh, there, there is, uh, an expectation. That charter schools are capped at a certain limit around New York State, but there is not, uh, a moratorium currently.
All right, and when I, um, and at the beginning of this, um, meeting and in private meetings about the school. I was under the impression that it would not take away any dollars from the Buffalo Public School. So I want to be real clear on that. Cause I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing from the presenters that it doesn't take away any promised dollars from the Buffalo Public School. Um, but from the district that it does. I need clarity.
Yeah. Every, every charter school student costs the district a tuition amount. Uh, that amount last year totaled the entire state aid increase. That we received and not so much because there were additional charter school students. Just the, the, the rate had gone up that the state was allowing for these students. So it will absolutely cost the district, uh, money. What, what we would like. Uh, is, uh, for, for any of these students to continue to be a part of the Buffalo Public Schools. I don't know where, uh, the outreach is for the thousands of students that have been referred to in the presentation. Um, because if, if, if that's the case, it's possible that we're talking about adults. Uh, if they're beyond the age of twenty one, they're not going to be able to be enrolled in this charter school. Um, our adult education department has thousands of young people ages seventeen on up. But yeah, each charter school student that is enrolled, uh, at any charter school. Uh, costs the district several thousand dollars, uh, and I can get you the exact, uh, number of that of what that tuition. But it's, it would be in the door of the district and out, uh, without benefiting, uh, students in Buffalo. And, and one final point, Mr. President, this is the breaking point that we're at, and I want to be very clear as Dr. Cash has certainly been clear. This is not about being against charter schools. Uh, Dr. Cash has made it very clear. He supports high functioning, high quality schooling options, including charter schools for parents. But we're at a, we're at a breaking point financially where it is a fact. That now we're pitting the children in traditional public schools against the children in charter schools. Because all of the money that is needed to support the charter school industry. Means that state aid increases can no longer be used to bolster the programs in the traditional public schools of Buffalo. Because it's all going out to support the tuition payments to charter schools. If the state could solve that problem, if they could fund charter schools separately. And hold the kids sitting at Futures Academy, the kids sitting at East High School, the kids sitting at Burgard High School. If we could hold those kids harmless from the financial impact of the way that the state funds charter schools. We wouldn't even be having this discussion. But as it is right now, the state has not addressed the funding, uh, system. And therefore our students are the ones who are being deprived of what they need in terms of resources. Because the money is out the door.
Okay, and I'm going to ask for just short answers because I've, I've got a meeting at noon and I really want to get to the point. Um, I, I am not, you know, uh, this, this for me is not a matter, as, as you said, Dr. Quest is of charter versus public. Um, and, and I, it is about the, the folks out there who may not, who, who may need that safety net. So I'm trying to learn more about that. I really don't care about the Learn for Life, uh, organization. If, if they're no good, uh, then they should be, we should be dumping them. But I'm not sure if that then means that the thought of what is being brought before us should be dumped too. Um, a company, they come and go. It's like, you know, you eating Nabisco crackers this day, if you still want crackers and Nabisco is gone, i- is the, is there still a need for the cracker? Um, uh, and so at the end of the day, I'm trying to understand this process. More than understand the charter versus the money and because at the end of the day, I think what is most important is the student. Um, that, that to me is, is number one. So the, the convincing to me is always going to be on the student, on the community and what's best. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to ask two more questions and if I get quick answers, it, I'll be able to hear them.
Can I ask, can I answer the last question with clarity with real quickly? Because, because we keep talking about all the power tools in general. And I'm only talking about one large charge. I'm talking about Learn for Life Child School. Learn for Life Child School will not cost the district any additional money because the student is out of school. The student that we take is no longer, the student is bringing no money into the district at all. Once that child comes back into the district, you understand, then that child come, come, come to Learn for Life Charter School. Then a third of that money will stay with the district. Two thirds of that money will go for the learning of the student. So that will be a net gain for the district. Because the district was getting zero money for that student prior to them coming back into coming to Learn for Life. So again, I don't, I know you want the short answers, but we're not competing. All the students that district gets and all the students they keep all are better. All we're trying to do is get, save more of the students, a hundred and fifty students that they don't get. We're trying to get them to make sure that we serve, we get every student, uh, uh, be able to move to post secondary education.
And, and I know, uh, so Dr. Kressi's just answer me this. If, if the student that they are trying to recruit is not in school at all anywhere for, let's say, a year. Does the district still get money for that student?
The district doesn't get money for students that have fully withdrawn from the school district. Uh, if those students come back, uh, in, in a different capacity and attend a charter school. Uh, the district will have to pay for those students to attend that charter school. So that will be again, a part of the mounting ever increasing and colossal financial bill. That the district pays every year to charter schools that we are unable to provide our students. So, uh, you know, it's.
Can I, can I give you a quick scenario? Cause I, I, I hear you about to go into that three point sermon again in a minute. Let, let, let me, let me, let me ask you this. Student A is no longer in school, has not been to school in a year. The district gets nothing for that student in two thousand and twenty one, correct?
I, I cannot be sure how exactly disenrolled students are, uh, accounted for in the system. And when they are cut off from the state aid formula, I can certainly get you that information, but the, the broader point.
No, no, that, 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 no, not the broader. I, I gotta, I gotta be at the micro right now. If the student, if, if the Board of Education, and this is just a question, because I need to understand, and I think the public needs to understand. If the student, whatever the formula is, if the Buffalo Public Schools is no longer getting money for that student. And here's the question, and the student goes to learn for life. How, where does the money come from to fund that student? Who is, hasn't been funded through Buffalo Public Schools? Does that come from the Board of Education? That's my question.
We, we will receive a bill for that student and we will pay the tuition cost at the charter school.
Well, that money comes from, so the, 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 for the money, that money for that child will go to Buffalo Board of Education. One third of which they will keep, two third of it will go to the charter school coming from the state education department.
But will it be additional money that will come in or is this whatever the allocation from the state that stays the same? Or did, then do they add if a student comes online that wasn't expected to come online?
They'll, that's additional money because they, they, you get, you get money based on your census. So if that student is added back to the rolls, they will get money for that student.
It's, that's, it's not additional money. And it's also, it's not understanding exactly how the district receives its allocation. We will get funding, uh, and hopefully an increase in funding from the state every year. That is a portion to us based on what the legislature passes. And, uh, what will happen with that money, because the charter school bill. Uh, will grow as a consequence of a school such as this. Is that less of that increase will be able to be applied to our students in the traditional public school? Because we are paying a large tuition bill at a new charter school.
But that student that we're talking about in this case would, would not be, it was not in the school. So once they come back into the school, now you get the money for them. That you, you were getting zero for them.
Hold on, I, I don't want to get into an argument because it's a false narrative about the financial piece. That is not the, the district is making the point of what charter schools cost and how it disenfranchises currently sitting traditional public school students. I've made that point so at board members. What I am advising this common council is to think long and hard about supporting this particular charter school company. This is a company that is unacceptable and should be unacceptable to you on many levels. Because of what has happened to their organization around the country.
That's not the question that the council member asked. I, I, I'm going to respond to that, but that's not the question he asked. You changed the conversation. He asked about the funding for the student.
And so. Mr. Radford, I'll give you the opportunity to have the floor and rebut. Uh, right now, Council President has the floor.
Mr. Chair, and I, again, I apologize. I have to be in Budsey. Um, I'm already late, um, and they need me for a forum. So what I, what I commit to do is I know this is recorded. It was, it is live on Facebook. I will come back and, and observe the rest of the meeting, uh, reach out, uh, to my colleagues who are on, um, to, to, uh, get an assessment of where we are. Again, I apologize.
Thank you, Council President. Any other council members have questions?
Yeah, I just, I, I just want to follow up on that because I'm, I, I really want to understand that too. I mean, Mr. Radford talked about this being new money students who have not been in school for a year or two. And now they're coming back. How does that money come from the school board when that student was not in school? You get what twenty five thousand per student? Mr. Dr. Christie's? Whatever, how much you get for a per student? You're on mute.
We, we do not receive twenty five thousand per student that is used towards the education of students. That, that is not the number. Um, if, if you, uh, if this is the, 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 the motivation for you to consider. Uh, the, the charter school and to think that somehow it's a windfall for the district. Uh, first and only a certain amount, it's, it's a specious argument. It simply is not the case. Uh, there is no windfall from the district. That money comes in, uh, to the district and it goes out. And not only that, it's compounded by the fact that in the first year. Uh, there is no accounting for that student as a member of the district. The district has to front the money, uh, to the charter schools. And a portion of it is reimbursed to the district afterwards. It is a very, very complicated and unfair funding formula. Uh, that punishes public school districts and it doesn't allow us to use our monies to support children in the traditional public schools. So, uh, but, but like I said, and, and like I will continue to say. Uh, there are many charter schools in the city of Buffalo that are doing some great things for kids. And that Superintendent Cash, uh, really encourages a collaboration with. We're proud of those collaborations. Westminster Charter School is a conversion charter school. Enterprise is a district sponsored charter school. I want to be very clear because I don't, I'm not going to get tangled in the discussion about finances because that's not everything. What you're being asked to do is attach yourself to a company that is unacceptable on so many levels. And that's what we are asking you to very carefully consider.
Well, my, my, I, I don't know. I've been through the charter school process and I know that there is some investigation. And if this company is not appropriate, I don't believe the state will approve that, correct?
That, that's our hope and expectation, and we will leave no stone unturned to make sure that every level of government and civic leadership is informed about this company.
And that is correct, council member. As a matter of fact, there is a vetting process, uh, before you get to this stage where you go for the approval. That, um, they have, we've already passed that, that Learn for Life has already gone through the initial, um, app where you submit an application that just have your application can submit. Consider and then as a background check done that they've already passed and now they are going for the full, before the full, um, board of regents for a vote. And again, I, I'll wait till you give me the opportunity but to give a further answer to that. I, 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 I was just trying to be, keep the conversation focused and on your question about the fact, um, that, that there is a. When you have a student who was not getting, the district is not getting any resources for that student at all. You understand? And then the student comes back into the system. One third of that money stays with the district. I don't, no matter how you, you know, look at it, one third of the money that they wasn't getting now stays with the district. Only two thirds of that money goes to the charter school, this particular charter school. So I don't want, I don't want the, the general conversation about charter schools in general. To apply to this school specifically and, and we keep not answering the question about this school specifically.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Wyatt. Any other council members have questions?
Mr. Chair, we've been joined again by, uh, Paulette Woods.
May I speak?
And you've also been joined by Councilmember Wingo and Larry Scott of Board of Ed seeks your attention.
Thank you, welcome. Um, uh, Ms. Woods.
May I speak?
Ms. Woods, the council members have the floor currently. Uh, we'll let them ask their questions, then I'll get to you, uh, prior to the end of the meeting. Councilmember Rivera? You're on mute.
Oh, excuse me. Can you hear me now? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad I sat in on this meeting because, um, you know, I've heard, um. The rationale for the, uh, for us, um, signing the resolution. Um, which was, um, for those people that have dropped out of school, and I think, um, I think that merits some consideration. However, I am concerned about some of the allegations. And I don't know if there have been made findings yet on any of these allegations, so that's important to me. I want to know whether or not, uh, findings have been made with regards to the misconduct. Uh, the graduation rates, the achievement rates, dropout. I want to know all those things, obviously, certainly before I sign off on anything. Um, and I don't know where it is in the process, uh, if the state is considering that right now. But I hate to sign something and then later on I said, wow, jeez, I shouldn't really, I shouldn't have signed it. Um, I wish I would have had more information and not having that information right now is problematic to me as a council member for me to put my name on something. is problematic to me as a council member, for me to put my name on something. Uh, although I listen to the merits of this, and everybody wants, uh, our young folks to go back to school and get their graduations, and that's, I think we're all on board on that. Uh, there've been a number of allegations. Uh, one was the allegations against the company itself. I'd like to know more about that. Uh, I don't think, not only do I want to be associated with a company that's, uh, disreputable, but I believe many people that are here would not want to be associated with a company that's disreputable. Uh, so that is a concern, those are allegations. I don't know about any findings. I certainly want to know about it. And if there are findings, I'm sure that many people that are on this Zoom right now will probably, uh, take a second look at it. Regarding the funding and whether or not the state is going to give any additional money, um, so we can cover the cost of sending these students or paying part of the students', uh, fees? I don't know. I mean, that's something Gresky and, and, uh, Mr. Radford and, and some of the members discuss back and forth. So there's no clarity on that, so hopefully we'll get some clarity on that. Uh, so there's a lot of things that are unclear right now. One is the reputation of the, of, of this company. And then secondly is the funding itself, whether or not the city loses money. And I think we need more clarity on that before I, at least as one of eight council members would agree to sign off on anything. Thank you.
Hey, council member, I certainly agree. I'd like to, uh, get any information possible to, um, find out, um, about the allegations against this, against this company. Other council members? Councilmember Nokowski?
I, I share your, uh, concerns, Councilmember Rivera and Bowman. I, I do believe that is germane if, uh, we have both, we have all information submitted to the council, um, before further review. Thank you.
Agreed. Uh, council members? Anyone else? Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you. I'm looking in the chat section, I'm seeing that, um, Attorney Phil Dabney would like to speak to some of these concerns. Uh, so I would like to just yield some of my time, so that he could speak to those concerns generally. Then I'll come back, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. Dabney?
Uh, thank you, Councilman Wingo, uh, for this opportunity yielding some, uh, me some of your time. I just wanted to briefly state that, um, uh, it, it, it sounded to me, as I've been listening, uh, throughout this meeting, and those representatives, um, from the Board of Education, um, which, um, I, I can appreciate the passion, um, as well as their, um, their concerns related to, uh, uh, Learn for Life. And I did, as Mr. Scott, uh, had asked us to do, I did a quick Google. I mean, I had already done so, um, but I did a quick Google just today. Um, I think that there was a great deal of hyper, uh, hyperbole relating to, uh, the character of Learn for Life as provided by, um, Mr. Scott. Uh, there is in fact, uh, what appears to be a lawsuit in, uh, I guess, two thousand nineteen, where there were two schools that were, uh, related to Learn for Life, um, where a judge had ordered them closed. And it appears that there was, um, at least presentation of brick and mortar for each location that in fact did not, um, did not exist. Um, in addition to that, um, the, the graduation rate related to those two schools were, um, abysmal. There were twenty-three percent and twenty percent. Again, relating to the presentation of two locations where there was supposed brick and mortar that did not apparently exist. Um, that particular suit is up on appeal. Um, the attorney for, uh, Learn for Life has indicated that, um, there was misrepresentation of not only the law, um, but also the fact. As it stands, though, that matter, which involves those two schools, are up on appeal. Uh, I just think that, you know, full, uh, as to the extent that we can, full, uh, disclosure, or, 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 or at least be, uh, open about those particular schools in San Diego, California, um, do in fact, um, that isn't in fact, um, an existing issue. Um, I, I believe however, as already indicated by, um, uh, Mr. Rafferty, that just as I did a simple Google, I'm sure that the New York State, um, Department of Education, and then the, the responsive boards would also have the opportunity to, uh, Google and probably do a far more diligent, um, assessment as to the quality and character of Learn for Life. And I can assure you that as an attorney here in Buffalo of over twenty years, I would not relate myself to an entity or organization that I felt that in any way, um, was undermining the integrity or could undermine the integrity of the Board of Education and also what we all purpose, and that is the education of the children of this community. With that, I return to that above, uh, for the Wingo, or Councilman Wingo, sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Wingo, you have the floor.
Thank you, just real, real, real briefly. Um, first of all, the Common Council is, uh, I believe, a very appropriate, um, platform for constituents to come and make an appeal for support. Because of that, uh, I believe, I think it was Coroner Cash who stated in times past that charter school students are Buffalo Public School students, and Buffalo School District students are of course Buffalo Public School students. They're all our constituents. So all students are our students. There is no distinction to the Common Council. I want to make sure that's very, very clear. There is no distinction for the Common Council. They're all our students, first of all. Second of all, how our students are educated definitely matters to us. The statistics surrounding these students matter to us. What we are not going to allow, what I am not going to tolerate or stand for is anyone trying to pit the Common Council against charter schools. Because there are some very successful charter schools, and then there are some charter schools who definitely need some help. But all of our school district schools, the majority of them, need help. So I'm concerned about the outcomes. And this program here is targeting students who are not in the district. Let's make sure we keep that first and foremost in the forefront of our minds. They're targeting students who are not in the district. The district is not receiving a dime for these students. When Sam Rafferty and his team go and find these students, get them through this program, the district, whether they are paying upfront or not, they leave with one-third more money for not even educating these students. So we have to make sure that we're keeping in the very forefront of our mind as a common council, that all of these students are our students. And we, as a, as a body of elected officials, represent our constituency, of which of course, these students are our constituents as well. And I'd like to see them educated. And right now, it doesn't seem like the Buffalo School District has an apparatus to do what Mr. Radford is trying to do, which makes this very appealing to me personally. So, uh, thank you for that brief moment, Mr. Chair, and I'll yield back.
Thank you, Councilmember. Um, any other members, uh, council members? Then I will, um, give the floor to Mrs. Woods, then Mr. Radford for conclusion.
Honorable council members, I, uh, was off the phone when, uh, the councilman, the council president asked that question about the fiscal impact. I'm sure that our CEO will be able to clearly give you, um, the information to let you know that one of the biggest problems that the Buffalo Public Schools has in, in the fact that they don't separate the funding for Buffalo Public Schools and the charters is that we have to upfront the money. I know that you council members, if you passed your city of Buffalo budget and you did not have money for, uh, an, uh, unexpected expenditure, a new, uh, fire building, uh, a new convention center, or whatever, it would, it would cause you some consternation and some problems if you suddenly had to give out millions and millions of dollars for an unanticipated building, or in our case, charter schools. What Will Cressy was saying to you is, there are good charter schools. We have tons of them here in Buffalo. We have more than the state law allowed. When the law was passed for charter schools to try innovative techniques, so that Buffalo Schools could say, oh, that's a good, uh, technique, we'll, we'll, we'll adopt that, we'll include it. There was supposed to be and is supposed to be a symbiotic, positive working relationship between charter schools and Buffalo Schools. We have been flooded with them. The financial impact, which is what the councilman asked to be very clear, that thirteen, fourteen hundred, uh, dollars, a thousand dollars, uh, we have to pay for each child. We have to pay that upfront, fine money. We are in a budget crisis, getting cut. We cannot afford to have a, a, additional charter schools. As far as the moratorium request, it isn't anti-charter. What it is, is survival for all of your students, including the nine thousand charter children we already have. It's, it's a cry for efficient uses of resources. We have open seats in our excellent innovative high schools for these children. We have programs they outline for you to reach out for these students, to bring them in. We have excellent programs to recapture our students. But the scenario that you've been presented, that Buffalo Public Schools will gain money, it's just simply not factual. And our CEO will, will be very happy to present to you how the money comes in and how this will be an additional burden that won't be recouped for, uh, we're, we're lobbying, we're lobbying the, the, the state to please move the payments. So this won't be a crisis for us. Please don't give us another crisis. We can't afford anything else. Please stand with us. I'm not against our children. That's why I volunteer here forty hours. Please help stand with our kids. Stand with Buffalo Schools viability and sustainability. And treat us as you would want to be treated. You would not want somebody to suddenly throw some additional expense and unbalance your budget in a time of a crisis. I need money for COVID-nineteen funds, I need to open the schools. Stand with us, councilmen. I trust you, I respect you, and I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Uh, Larry Scott would like to be recognized.
Thank you, Chairman Bowen. I, I just have a question for Mr. Radford and maybe Mr. Dabney as well. Um, will Learn for Life, if approved, not enroll students that are currently in a Buffalo Public School or in a, an existing, another existing charter school?
Again, um, so Learn for Life target group is students who are dropped out of school. You know what I'm saying? So I can't say what Learn for Life will or will not do. I don't obviously work for Learn for Life. The group of students that they serve are students who are dropped out of school. So if a student leaves another charter school, then come to that school, um, you know, I, I, I'm sure they're able to serve them, uh, for, for Buffalo Public School students drop out of school and they come to there, I'm sure they're able to serve them. Um, so the answer to the question is that, um, Learn for Life's model, the model that, that, that they've worked on for the last twenty years is to target students who are dropped out of school. That's who, that's where they, that, that's who, their, their whole system is built to service.
So a just quick follow-up, then I think it would be important to see some data on, in other existing schools, how they've actually reached students that aren't currently enrolled. Um, the charter school, regardless of its mission, has to be open to students that are currently enrolled in Buffalo Public Schools and in any other existing charter schools. And if they are then enrolling students that are in existing schools, if, it would shoot a, a huge hole in that claim that it's bringing additional money into Buffalo Public Schools that we don't have, because those students aren't being educated.
And so I, 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 and I, and I'll, I'll respond to that in my rebuttal, um, because I, I, I was gonna respond to that anyway, and I don't want to just go back and forth on that when I, that's in my rebuttal, Chairman Bowen, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
So I, with my rebuttal at this point.
Larry, are you all set?
Yes, thank you, Chairman.
Uh, yes, Mr. Radford in conclusion, you have the floor.
So, so first of all, again, thank you council members for your patience, um, and, and board members who have shared, um, information as well as Dr. Kresny. Let me just say, uh, to you, uh, Mr. Petrucci, um, we will be coming to the Buffalo Board of Education. So I appreciate your concern about the fact that, um, this should be being brought to the Buffalo Board of Education. The Board of Educ, um, I think we, uh, are scheduled to come to you, um, in September, prior to this being approved. So we will be, be before the Board of Education to get the Board of Education's support. Um, at this point, um, part of the application requires us to get community outreach, um, from, uh, political, uh, people, business people, community, you know, community people, not for props, the whole range. And so the Buffalo Common Council is in that category of people that we're reaching out to. That's why we're before, uh, the Buffalo Common Council. Um, the other reason why we're before the Buffalo Common Council, and I think is really important, is because of exactly what y'all seen happen here today. Um, we come into you, asking you for, for support about one charter school, um, that's not a typical charter school. And what we end up with is an hour-long debate about charters versus public schools. And in that hour-long debate about charters versus public school, we heard everything about the charter formula and stuff that's general to charter schools, but not specific to Learn for Life charter schools. We wanted to be able to have a platform where we could talk about the specifics of Learn for Life charter schools, because we want to focus the conversation on the student. Here's what the bottom line is. There are tens of thousands of students walking around Buffalo right now who do, who, who are not in Buffalo Public School, who do not have a high school diploma. And with all the good programs, I'm, uh, the, the Dr. Cressy, I'm as much of a supporter of Buffalo Public Schools as anybody in this city. What I'm talking about now is those students we are losing. For whatever reason, they choosing not to use the Buffalo Public Schools for that purpose. We're simply saying, if we can get a safety net to go out and reach and get a, a hundred and fifty of those students, and the thousands of students we're talking about, why couldn't it be a collaborative relationship? Why couldn't it be a relationship where we all working together for all students? We're not trying to compete against Buffalo Public Schools. We, all the wonderful virtual programs they got, we support that. We hope more students take advantage of that. We're not trying to compete against none of the new innovative programs. We hope more students program. Matter of fact, we hope no students drop out. And there's no need for Learn for Life charter school. But the reality is, they have dropped out, and they are walking around on our streets. And so the more options we have available, it seems like the better to me. But because we get into a conversation to attack and tear down, we don't have a real conversation about the needs of the student. So Learn for Life, you know, has been around for twenty years. The, if you do a Google search, uh, for organizations that have been twenty years, you will find tens of thousand positive articles about, uh, Learn for Life. I'm talking about, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about tens of thousand, you know what I'm saying? You can find a Google search, I can go and give you, if I did a Google search of Buffalo Public Schools right now, I can show you all kinds of scandal, I can show you all kinds of negative articles about Buffalo Public Schools, if that's what I wanted to focus on. All I'm simply telling you is that they have been vetted by the State Education Department. They have been vetted by, they, they're opening schools, they have schools in Texas, at Michigan, Ohio, South Carolina. So this is not a, a, a corporation that's rife with scandal and not able to open up schools. That's just ridiculous. And if, if that's what you want to focus on to attack them, fine, but you can go look at the statistics and see that they serve students. And here's the most important part of the process of serving students. They are serving students that have dropped out of school. They are serving students that have dropped out of the public school system. They're not, they're not serving the student that, that, the, the general public school is serving. They're trying to come up with a plan to service the specific needs of students who the regular educational process didn't work for. So with all the good intentions of Buffalo Public Schools, it has not been successful at serving the needs of every student. Uh, and so what, what this does is give you the opportunity to do that. Um, so the, 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 the actual, the, 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 there's no question about the fact that this supports the viability of Buffalo Public Schools. It does not take away any resources. Yeah, we can try to sidestep that question all day and every day. We can try to sidestep that question all day and every day, but the bottom line is that this is the resources for this student were no longer going to anybody. And it's now a net gain for the district. And not only just that, the last point I'll make is that it also, this student is recorded in Buffalo Public Schools as a dropout, which means it increases our dropout rate for Buffalo Public Schools. When you take this student and you put them back into the school, it causes our dropout rate to go down. We have less students drop out. And not only that, it allows the graduation rate to go up because you have less students in your that that's that's in that cohort that's being recognized as a dropout. So I know in general, the posture around charter schools is what we heard on the line today. I think a council members, I think a closer look at Learn for Life, and we welcome everything that the council that that Dr. Crese said, we welcome a close look, Mr. Councilmember Rivera, into the background of the organization. We would not be sitting here representing to you that this was a credible organization if they were rife with the things that they suggest they are. We went, we did the background investigation. We went and visited it. State Education did the background investigation. Now we are at this stage where they're going to prove them up or down. And so we're asking you at this point, if you need if you need additional information about anything specific, we're welcome to, we're 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 we'll be happy to provide you with that information. If you need information about the data in terms of graduation rates and the results they have, we happy to provide you with that information. And I actually sent it to you already. I I sent to your council staff. I sent the PowerPoint that breaks out all their background data, and so you have it in your record. But we if you want it in another format, we will have the Learn for Life staff made available to you to give it to you in that format. And again, I don't I don't I don't think we can underemphasize the fact that these are students who were dropped out of school, who now, if we only got one of them, if we only got one of those students back in school and got a high school diploma, it seemed like it would be worth it. Why would we be against something that's trying to get students who have dropped out of school get back in the system and get a high school diploma and be able to move on? Why would we be against that? I have no idea if we care. If we are student focused, I don't see why we'll be against that.
Thank you, Mr. Radford. I certainly appreciate this entire conversation, everybody having, you know, a great conversation here with, as you suggested, Mr. Radford, please supply us. I I will look into that PowerPoint that you've given us. Any data from all the members on this call, anybody that wants to present any data, that would be wonderful. At this time, I know some council members have, you know, some some questions or want to see information regarding to potential allegations that may have been brought forth. So we'll definitely do the research. We'll put this on the table, and we'll come back to it. So motion to table?
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski. And motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
Seconded by Councilmember Galenbeck.